Okay, let's make sure we have the city manager and Mr. Director Tan with us. I know if they're ready.
Council, we are here and we are ready.
Okay, we're going to reconvene the meeting. And city clerk, if you could please go to item seven of public hearings, item A.
Item seven A, hold a public hearing to consider protests regarding the storm drainage and flood protection fee and continue publicly, public hearing until April 6, 2021 to conclude the required 45-day notice period for all properties.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to go ahead and turn it over first to the city manager and then to Director Tan. Once, I'd like to see staff get through the presentation. I immediately want to go to the public hearing, have anybody be able to speak in some case they wish to go and take care of other things. So with that, city manager?
Sure. Good afternoon, or no, not afternoon, good evening, city council and members of the public. Javon Grogan, city manager, I will be joined tonight as the mayor said by Jimmy Tan, our public works director. We are here to talk about a proposed storm drainage and flood protection fee. And we have a presentation that we will go through and then, of course, we are available for count, for questions. As was stated before, the objective is to hold a public hearing to consider protests regarding the San Bruno storm drainage and flood protection fee and continue that public hearing until April 6 to conclude the required 45-day notice period for all properties. So our agenda is we will give an overview of our water systems. We'll talk about why we're doing this, why during a pandemic we are talking about stormwater. So we'll discuss the funding challenges and the financial needs. We will review our infrastructure, current projects and our unfunded capital needs. We will also review the PROCT 218 assessment process that we are undertaking in the public outreach. We will also take, as I said, questions. So let's jump right in. So we have three water systems here in the city of San Bruno that your city runs, operates and maintains to ensure that they function safely for the community. First one is a potable drinking system. So when you turn on the tap and get drinking water, that is ran and operated by the city of San Bruno. It's a network of pipes that delivers clean water to every home and business. Next is the storm water. This is also called our wastewater system. That's a network of pipes that collects the groundwater. I like to say when you flush the toilet and it conveys it, conveys it to our water quality control plant that we operate jointly with the city of South San Francisco. That groundwater is treated prior to discharging into the San Francisco Bay. We're not talking about the two, those two systems right now. We are talking about the bottom system, our stormwater system, the one that's unfortunately often overlooked. So this is the network of pipes that are subterranean that collects the rain runoff and conveys it to a creek and then directly into the bay. And so this is the system that, as the city council knows, poses a significant challenge here in the city of Bruno. And the graph you have before you is the graph that we presented to council when we adopted the 1920 budget. It has a estimated figure for 2021, but it shows what we know, which is this fund is going negative next year. We operate on a July to June fiscal year. So in just a few months, that fund will operate in the, in the negative and not be able to cover its costs. And so it will unfortunately, the expenses don't go away and they have to come from, from, from elsewhere, which will impact our ability to provide other services. So the fee has not been increased since 1994. It is an annual property tax assessment. It is paid on the property tax roll that homeowners receive. This is not like water or sewer that is paid on the bi-monthly utility bills. This is a annual charge. Unfortunately, the system is over 100 years old, is aging. The cost to maintain the infrastructure is increasing and the general fund unfortunately has to be the backstop. And we have subsidized this, this utility unfortunately over the years because the costs have not, the revenue has not increased. But with the fund going negative, it's placing increasing pressures on the city's general fund. And so how much does each property pay? Well, our current structure right now, essentially for all properties under 11,000 square feet, which is the vast majority of all of our parcels, every property owner pays $46 a year on their property tax roll. Unfortunately, that does not meet the O and M need, the operations and maintenance, nor does it cover what Jimmy will talk about is the nearly $30 million of improvements that we know we have to make, that we've known of since 2014 when we did a master plan study, but we have not had the revenue to, to address. And so again, the, the general fund must cover any shortfalls. And this is not an if, this is a, it has already happened. In the last two years, we have spent more than $1.5 million from the city's general fund to cover projects that were stormwater related because we did not have the funds to improve this utility. Stormwater is a utility. It should operate as an enterprise, which are the charges should cover the O and M costs as well as put away money for capital maintenance. Unfortunately, here in the city of San Bruno, our rate structure, which on average is $46 per year, unfortunately does not cover that cost and it's impacting our ability to provide other services. When failures happen with the fund going negative, it will come from our, our general fund reserve and truly threaten the health of the city's general fund. So notable stormwater challenges. So what has happened? I mentioned $1.5 million. And so the community will remember that in December 2019, there was a landslide in Crestmore Canyon just off from San Bruno Avenue near Glenview. And it cost us $1 million immediately to call out contractors. We had to declare a state of emergency in order that we can access our reserve funds and stabilizing that, that hillside and protecting the integrity of San Bruno Avenue was an immediate need. And there's a stormwater culvert that goes south to north under the roadway and drains rain runoff down into the creek that is in the canyon. That, due to lack of maintenance, eventually corroded the hillside with a significant landslide and threatened the integrity that we had to protect the roadway. In addition, in January of 2020, we discovered, we discovered a drain culvert near Crystal Springs Avenue just north of the county park that has cost us to the, to date, $450,000 to repair. That does not even include repairing the hillside that corroded. That is just repairing the pipe and relocating the, where it discharged into the, into the creek there and re-routing it. And so this very well, if we have to cover additional costs, may continue to rise. And we have, and also there is a underfunded, or actually, we have good news. There has for a long time been a undersized storm drain pipe on Spyglass. I know the council knows about it, everybody in the public may not know about it, but Director Tan will present some images on it. We have been sandbagging two homes for years now because there's an undersized portion of our storm drain system. Thankfully, the public works department has applied for a grant and we just received a word from FEMA and Cal ES that that project will be covered by a grant and so that comes off. Unfortunately, that does not touch the $30 million need. As Director Tan will talk about, that 30 million dollar need is for our backbone system. There's also challenges with the pipes that service the residential and business communities. And as you'll see, there is a long history of flooding in San Bruno downtown and lower line neighborhoods. It truly affects the entire city. And so that's the pop-up of, so that $1.5 million need thankfully has been reduced to $400,000. There is a local match to the grant and so we anticipate having to pay $400,000. So achieving stability in our stormwater system, as the city council knows, is a part of our comprehensive fiscal sustainability project, a project that we began in November of 2018. I do not have the, the long roadmap of all of the efforts that have been very successful to improve the health of the general fund, but it's important for the public to know that this effort is directly connected to preventing further fiscal stress on the general fund and addressing our, our overall ability to continue to provide other, other services that the residents depend on. And again, this is the utility, utilities enterprises typically cover their full costs. Critically important, and so that I said bullet two, as I've mentioned before, we conducted a stormwater fee in September of 2020. That resulted in a very long analysis, a, a report conducted by Will Dan that had recommendations on what we need to do to address the fee structure. It came out with recommendations that recommended that we have, that we adjust our model and have a fairer approach to charge properties based on their size and their impervious surface area. Director Tan will talk about that. And so with the council's approval, we embarked on this 218 process to put before the, the San Bruno community the, a financial improvement of their stormwater system to recover money so we can address these needs. And so I'll pause there and I'll turn it over to Director Tan that'll take us through some detailed slides on exactly what our system looks like and why this is so critically important.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, everyone. Here's a quick overview of the city storm system. As the city manager mentioned, the city storm system is over 100 years old, was installed back in the 1900s. The system consists of, you know, drainage lifts which catchers the water, you know, from the roadways and conveys water into underground pipelines as large as like a 72 inches or 60 in diameter, then eventually into these large box culverts. You know, some of these box culverts are large as like 10 feet in height and wide and 8 feet in height. The picture of these box culvert are similar to what you see in the bottom right-hand corner of the slide. The storm system flows by gravity from west to east and then discharges into a San Bruno channel, which is located behind the residential properties on the east side of 7 Downing and the near the Cooper Road area. And within the city, there are two pump stations that were built back in the 1960s, but both are owned and operated and maintained by the county of San Mateo. The city completed the first stormwater master plan back in 2014 and it recommended all these capacity improvements, you know, totaling more than $26 million in 2014 estimate. But since there was, there is inadequate funding, none of these projects have been implemented. Here's a map that shows the, that's from the stormwater master plan that shows the various watershed in, in color along with the stormwater system that we're modeled. There are six different watersheds in the city. Watersheds are drainage basins or catchments. So in order to determine the, the capacity deficiency in the stormwater system, the hydraulic analysis or modeling was before. The model included mini trunk lines, as you see on these lines on the figure here that were, that formed the backbone of our stormwater system. And the local drain collection system pipelines were not included in these analysis. And the model indicated flooding occurs in all six watersheds during the, you know, the model design storm. And these problem areas are noted on the system map as shown with red dots and improvements, recommendations were included in the stormwater master plan and to reach, to address these issues. So, you know, as we know, the flooding can happen anywhere in the city. This slide shows just a sample of various flooding events that happened in the city. As you can see, the flooding locations can be either, you know, at the east or west side of the city. You know, one area that flooding occurred in the past, you know, on the east side, you know, it's, you know, near Huntington Avenue. The area, you also experience multiple flooding locations on the west side of El Camino as well, such as, you know, Valleywood Drive and even San Bruno Avenue. So definitely, you know, the flooding event can occur regardless of where we live if the system is unable to convey the, the flow during the storm events. And here's just some pictures of various flooding that happened throughout the city in 2014 and in 2017 storm events. On the left side, it shows a picture of Crestwood Drive heading up to Rolling Wood. You see San Bruno Avenue on the right-hand side, heading in the eastern direction. There's flooding events that happened in 2014 along Huntington Avenue and as well as Valleywood Drive, a near Crestwood Drive there at the intersection and as well as El Camino on the right-hand side. So since the master plan was completed in 2014, there were only minimum improvements that were made to the storm system and the city manager mentioned a couple here on the slide. One of them is the, the Crestwood Canyon's slope stability project and that was due to a, you know, erosion that actually happened within the hillside area. And we ended up spending over $1 million to restore the, the hillside at that location. And the other one is regards to the storm drain pipeline that was, you know, near the Christian Road, near SFPZ Eastman. We have allocated about $450,000 to repair that storm drain pipeline as well as some erosions, you know, to the, the hillside there as well. The other one is the box culvert at Masson, ended up spending about close to $920,000 there. These box culverts were damaged back in, in the storm in, in 2014 and the work was completed to restore these box culvert. And then there's some miscellaneous storm drain spot repair projects that were completed as well due to, you know, every time we televise our storm drain line, you know, we see failures, we end up having to, to fix those. So we, we spent over $800,000 to do storm drain spot repairs.
And I just want to point out that unfortunately, all of these repairs were the result of either an emergency that we needed to address or a absolutely critical need. And so that $30 million worth of projects that we have identified, we have not been able to proactively program for that. There is not the revenue in the stormwater fund to take on a bond to do that work. And so we're essentially addressing things as they fail and, and we'll be in a point now where, where that will impact the general fund in our reserves.
Thank you. Here's just some pictures of the, the various projects that we did. This is the Crestwood Canyon's stability project. It is the one near San Bruno Avenue of Austin Bernardes where we installed a wall there to protect the, the roadway. Pictures of the, the pipeline issue that we're, that we're still dealing with of the Crystal Springs Road. We already replaced the pipeline of the contractor from SFPZ, actually replaced the pipeline already. So we're, the next step is to determine the feasibility to restore the, the hillside that has eroded as well. This is a Masson box culvert. This is the one that actually blew, as you can see from the, the left, the upper left-hand corner during the storm event in 2014. The entire top slab of this box culvert popped up out of the, the ground and then ruptured the, the street and as well as the box culvert. So repairs were made to this box culvert. So, you know, besides these projects, you know, what else have we completed? Just a list of various unfunded projects that we have. And then the first is Spyglass Run, which the city manager mentioned. And then this, you know, neighborhood experiences flooding during storm events due to capacity issues. And we've been on site every single year putting sandbags at multiple properties and design is already underway. We're at about 100% design stage now and the total estimated cost is about $1.5 million. And then we, and then as the city manager mentioned, we were able to secure funding, a grant from FEMA Cal ES. We're about $1.6 million for this project. Then there's a capacity projects that are identifying the stormwater master plan. None of those projects have been completed. The total cost is in today's dollars about $30 million. And as previously mentioned, the, you know, the stormwater management didn't include any condition assessment. The replacement cost for those system based on condition is estimated to be about $23 million. And there's also, you know, various municipal regional permit requirements for all agencies to comply by the regional board to install the, you know, infrastructure or implementing regional stormwater capture system. So those costs are unknown at this time. Just some pictures of the, the storm system divisions that were captured using our city's CCTV system. The top two are pictures of the failed irrigated metal pipelines. The picture on the upper left-hand corner shows the holes and voids in the pipeline. The other right shows the collapsed pipeline as well. And the bottom picture shows the condition of the existing box culverts. Box culverts, you know, again are concrete structures that convey a large amount of water. And as you can, as you can see from the picture, on the bottom left, you know, the reinforcement bars or steel bars are already exposed and they're corroded. The bottom right picture shows more concrete that have failed and then falling apart, you know, from the ceiling of the box culvert structure. So regards to the proposed stormwater drainage fee, the city acquired the services of Will Dan Financial Services to, you know, assist in developing methodology for charging stormwater costs in a fair and equitable manner across all properties in the city. Since all properties discharge stormwater to the city's storm drain system, all properties within the city use the same, the stormwater system. So therefore, you know, the fees that are imposed are proportionate to each parcel's fair share of the added cost of the improvements and renovation and maintenance of the, the stormwater system. And this slide shows the difference between impervious and impervious surfaces. The impervious area, that's what we're being used to calculate the stormwater fee, is a portion of the parcel that's covered by, you know, the rooftop, the walkway, the patio, any driveway or any hard surfaces that prevent water entry into the soil and, and allowing the water to run off to the, the street. The impervious areas, the lawns or dirt or landscaping areas within the property where the water is allowed to enter the soil. So the calculation, again, of the proposed stormwater fee is based on impervious square footage area. And this slide shows the various recommended improvement projects from a stormwater master plan that was completed in 2014. There are total 14 projects that are identified for improvements ranging in different estimated costs for a total cost of about $26 million in 2014 and due to inadequate revenue to complete all of these projects. Then, and today, the cost today, right now, that had been escalated, you know, with inflation, it's about $31 million. This slide shows the median fee for various zoning categories. The residential R1 zone has the most number of parcels in the city with approximately, you know, 80, 800 parcels. The fee for the R1, a single-family residential zone is calculated to be approximately $154, which is about $100 higher than existing residential parcel fee of $46. The median fee for the commercial parcel is estimated to be about $2,500. Now I'll turn it back over to the city manager for the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll talk about our public outreach, community feedback, the public hearing and the protest period. So we've engaged in a robust community outreach. Know that from, from the staff and I know from the council, no one wants to be going to the public saying, we are proposing to increase fees right now. We don't, I know council doesn't. But given the need for the system and given the reality, we know that it's important to do everything we can to outreach to the community. And at some point, I saw over 100 people on this Zoom, sort of the largest meeting we've had in, in the last two years and certainly that we've been on Zoom. And so I think that's important and a recognition that the word is getting out. And so we conducted a public survey. We did an informational insert in all utility bills. We've done dedicated mailings to local properties. We've also sent letters to our out-of-town property owners. We, we've had an article in the city manager's newsletter. And Director Tan and I are on a bit of a road show to present to condo associations and community groups. We presented to The Lion, we're presenting to Rotary soon. And we're really wanting to, to, to get the fact-based information out as, as best as we can. We've also created a dedicated website to this effort. And so the, the public outreach has ran from December through now. From the survey, we have over 400 residents and property owners that have responded. And they listed the priorities that are there, right? They sort of agreed with everything that was on the survey and said, repair the deteriorating pipes, less prevent system failure, landslides and sinkholes, reducing pollutants that may potentially flow into the bay is important, as well as reducing the risk of flooding and costly repairs to local businesses and homes and preventing flooding that may obstruct residents' police and emergency response. You know, what we've also heard is, boy, why now? You know, now's not, now's a bad time and, or live within your means. And it's worth pointing out that one of the actions that the city council took, which is to cancel a previously adopted 5% rate increase of water and sewer charges, actually amounts to roughly a savings of approximately $9 per month, which is roughly also the amount that the average single-family home will pay. So the current fee is, is on average, most properties are paying $46 and most single-family residential homes will pay $150 under the new fee. And so that equates to roughly $9 a month. And so by, by the council's actions to cancel the pre-planned water sewer rate increase, should this be approved, for the majority of our residences would net out that additional cost. So the public hearing, property owners received a public hearing notice in February. And so that was Zoom, that is the Zoom link that we're on. And to, they have also received other mailings from the city. As of March 16th, when the staff report was created, we had received 181 protest letters from property owners in San Bruno. As of tonight, the city clerk tells me that we have received 263. This is a two-step process. And so the phase one, if there are more than 50% plus one, plus one additional homeowners that protest this fee, we cannot move forward. And so with, in the slide that Director Tan presented before, there's 12,937 parcels. And so there would need to be over 6,400 written protest letters to prevent the city council from moving forward to the next phase. And so protest letters can be mailed to the city clerk's office either by hand or by mail or by hand and the address is up above or on the slide, 567 El Camino Real. And it is also in the notice that was, of course, mailed to homeowners. And so this has been a very long or detailed slide, but the city clerk will conduct the election. It's a two-part process, as I mentioned. Part one is, is a majority protest, so 50% plus one protesting cannot proceed to step two. Step two requires a 50% plus one of the people that respond and vote in the mail ballot process have to say yes for the fee to go into effect. And so we do not have the date that that will occur. We are waiting on the conclusion of phase one in order to identify timelines or the precise date of that election. It is important to note, however, that the city is required to transmit the stormwater assessment to the county by July 31st. And so we do have a window. And that's part of the reason that unfortunately we're doing this now because should we go through this process and receive additional funds so the, the fund does not go negative next year, our deadline is really getting a new assessment for every parcel in, in San Bruno to the county by July 31st. And so should we proceed to phase two, we will have to undertake that election and, and do that work in order to put it on the, the property tax roll. And so we're happy to take any questions that the city council may have. This is a copy of the front page of one of the mailers that went out to every home in, in San Bruno that also had a survey. So thank you, city council. So thank you, city council, thank you members of the public. I know it's been a long night. I know that there was a lot on the agenda. And I know that this was a long presentation, but we wanted to really give you a true understanding of why this effort is going forward and why now. So thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And as I said, I want to, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to right away go over to the public. Anybody from the public who's been gracious enough to stay with us this evening, please go ahead and raise your virtual hand. I'm seeing eight speakers at this point, nine speakers, ten speakers. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So why don't we just start, City Clerk, if you could begin calling them in, please.
First is Philip Alexander.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, I was assessed with three hundred and sixty eight dollars and fifty eight cents for my property. And I am a retired person who is on social security. Because I have a property, which is, the land is about twelve thousand square feet, I have been charged three hundred and some dollars as yearly fee tax for my property. I am not in a position to give that type of increased money at one instance. It should be either, you should use the money that you got from the San Bruno fire, that fifty million dollars you are spending on the swimming pool and all those facilities. It is used by only a few people, maybe, maybe fifty or hundred people in a month or so, or maybe a hundred, two thousand people. But you are creating a problem for twelve thousand people who live in this city by charging us. So my, my, my opinion is to use the money that you are spending for the swimming pool and all those gym and facilities, use this for the, for the work that should be done for the stormwater project instead of spending it on the swimming pool project.
Are you finished, sir?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for staying and thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Next is Perry Peterson.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Well, thank you. On page one of the most recent mailing, there are several comments that caught my attention about, particularly one about floods and water getting into my garage, which damages property and fixtures. That's exactly what happens to me. And it's been happening since the eighties. In nineteen eighty three, there was a petition in my neighborhood for the city to improve the drainage. The city came out and dug a hundred foot ditch and put a couple drainage pipes in from De Soto Way to the creek. But it was, several months after that, it was evident that, that the pavement was so high in front of those pipes that the water never effectively used those pipes. So I see the need for stormwater improvements. I can't really do anything but support the, the increase in tax because the city is just, hasn't increased the stormwater revenue for so long that it's obviously needed. On the other hand, I've let the council know with a detailed informative packet that my situation has been ignored by the city for year after year. And they haven't even given me a definitive answer. All they're saying is, we'd like to think about it some more, essentially. So I'd like to ask the council, and I know they can't reply to this now, but I'm asking the council to direct the staff to review this continuous flooding damage. And I've even provided a video of it where the entire De Soto Way is flooded. So in summary, I have to support the stormwater tax increase because it's obviously needed. But I'd also like the city to support the difficulties I've been having. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Malcolm Robinson.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hello? Okay, thank you. My name is Malcolm Robinson and I live in Merced Drive. I'll first read my protest letter to the city clerk and then talk about storm runoff. You know, I did hear at least twice, fair and equitable in these fees, but they're not. You know, you're charging some people much more than others. And I'm not sure why that is. I think I heard forty six dollars per household. Well, that's not what we're seeing up here. You know the old saying about assumptions, that is exactly what this proposal does. The word assume is mentioned throughout the letter I received. Let's drop the assumptions and stick with facts. My lot is sixty five hundred and forty one square feet. My home profile is sixteen hundred and forty three square feet. That means twenty, my home covers twenty five percent of my lot. Half my lot is unusable steep hillside. I have to do a lot of work every year to keep it in place. And you don't walk on it, you crawl on your hands and knees up and down it. Your proposal is an assumption that my lot is sixty to seventy percent impervious is incorrect. A hundred percent of the storm runoff from my roof is captured in my yard. That is a hundred percent to my lot to replenish groundwater. I can provide pictures to prove the point. It is a common tactic in many environmentally sound locations and should be a recommended norm in San Bruno. I asked the city council to ask that our citizens and local businesses do that. Retain your stormwater, use it to replenish our water table. The only storm runoff from my property is storm drain, into the storm drain is from my driveway, which is twenty five by ten feet or two hundred and fifty square feet. That's three point eight percent of my property. You can bill me accordingly. Most of the storm runoff in San Bruno is from the massive amount of paved service streets in San Bruno to include three eighty and two eighty. El Camino Real at the corner of Snee is effectively twelve lanes wide of impervious pavement. You know, mostly, you know, and mostly El Camino Real is eight lanes through the town. You know, we're creating this situation by poor planning and poor management. If you want to deal effectively with the storm, problem storm runoff, you must address this issue. Capture the stormwater, let it drain into open spaces, swales and voids, as proposed by the state of California and the county of Samatay. The city council had a presentation a few years back. I recall the state mandated by water retention. Let's create a win win situation. Take a few lanes out of El Camino in San Bruno, turn them into bike lanes that absorb water and a row of trees and plantings to absorb water and replenish our water table. If you lessen the city's impact on flooding, it will help San Bruno retain water rather than pipe it to the bay. Weather's changing. We now get these hellacious Midwestern Florida type weather storms that just dump a lot of water in a short period of time. And our system is not currently equipped to handle it. Wish you luck. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
James Rue Gomez.
Good evening, Mayor Medina. Good evening, Mayor Medina. Honorable city council members, hardworking city staff. My name's James Rue Gomez. I currently live at eighteen sixty one Donner Avenue. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Samatay Building and Construction Trade Council, which is twenty five local unions and sixteen thousand highly skilled men and women, some of which live in our city here, many of which live in our city. The storm drains need to be replaced. I was driving down Janavin, one of the catch base, one of the grates fell right into the catch basins last week and we had to have emergency repairs there. But I'd like to talk about workforce agreements and ensuring that once this law, once this funding has passed, that we ensure we, we turn a public works contract that pays prevailing wage, that pays the wage, the healthcare, the education, retirement, right onto the workers' check. And rather than doing that and wasting our taxpayer dollars to unscrupulous contractors, that the city government sit down with the Building Trade Council and the negotiation agreement benefits the local, benefits the local labor in our town by hiring local contractors, local workers, local apprentices, returning veterans, people from underserved communities that have taken our MC three program, pre-apprenticeship program, and, and producing jobs, good paying jobs that pay on the working families platform. When people ask me what a union is, I tell them it's working families standing together. Tonight, we're asking you to stand with those working families. The working family platform is earn a decent wage. Even though we earn a decent wage, half of our dollars go to rents or mortgages. Healthcare, not only for the worker, for the family. A retirement contribution, our retirement contributions go back into our communities through safe investments in real estate as well as municipal bonds. So you will actually be loaning the money from some of our different pension funds to come back to our community. So it is good policy to turn public works projects that are paying prevailing rate into community workforce agreements. I sent you all a article that will be in this month's organized labor paper, Samatay County. It was written by an intern, college intern. And that has a number of different studies that show that having project labor, meaning workers get paid what they're supposed to get paid.
I think we lost Mr. Rue Gomez. Doesn't appear to be any longer connected.
Okay, we'll see if he comes back. Why don't we, so we can continue with those waiting to come up, why don't we go ahead and next in the queue, please?
Okay, I don't have a name. It just says Samsung. I'm unsure the name of the speaker, but I am trying to get you unmuted. Mayor, I recommend we move on to the next speaker. I'm unable to get them.
Okay, we can do that and circle back, please.
Tim O'Brien.
Hi, Tim, Marina, can you hear us? Yeah, hi, good evening, it's Marina. Tim is gonna talk. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to basically put my two cents here and I definitely against the, I'm protesting the increase. I believe that this issue has been neglected for so many decades. Some speakers say in the eighties. And that's not, that's unconscionable that it has been neglected for so long. And why is that? Why is it that it was neglect, has been neglected for so long? Second of all, why is it that the money from the community funds is not allocated to this project? Because this is more important than having a swimming pool or an rec center. I mean, I know the rec center is gonna happen, but the leftovers can be put to this, to this project. A second thing is, why is it the city of San Bruno does not go move forward with the, to get, to raise funds or allocate some resources by cannabis, okay? Give the green light to open cannabis in the city. This, we approved it, the residents approved it. So why is it that we cannot raise money through that? Or ask the county of Samatay or the state to help us resolve this issue? Because it is, it needs to be replaced. But it is unconscionable to put it on the residents, especially with the, the first speaker that is on low income, fixed income. A lot of families are unable to afford this, this increase. So you have to think about that. And yeah, that's my, my comments and I hope you take, you, you listen to the, to the residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Was Mr. O'Brien gonna speak too? Yes, okay, just wanna make sure.
Good evening. Yes, I agree with some of the residents that this, I'm protesting the fee increase. I know the system needs to be fixed. I see it, I see it when it rains that, you know, there is flooding. The water's rising in some areas and it needs to be fixed. But the city has known that this system has been needing, needing repair, needing to be replaced. And there's money being wasted, you know, doing these spot repairs and everything. But, you know, it's, the city needs to, like, like Marina said, find other ways to generate revenue. Just not by passing it on to the, you know, it seems like we've been, you know, things have been passed on to the residents, you know, measure G, you know, or, you know, raising our taxes. You know, it's just, it's just getting ridiculous just by easily passing it on to the residents. Oh, they'll take care of it. They don't mind, you know. That can't be, that can't be the answer to everything. So I ask that the city dig deep and find other sources of revenue so we can do these projects without affecting the residents. Their incomes are, some of the incomes are fixed. It's tough times these, this year, this past year's been really bad with the pandemic and it's affected everybody. And yeah, so please take in consideration the comments. And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and thank you to everybody for staying with us to this late hour. Next speaker, please.
Thomas Wells. Thomas, I'm trying to get you unmuted. Can you hear us?
Just so you know, your, your audio just cut out just recently at the last commenter. But if you can hear me, I would be happy to proceed. Okay, looks like you're letting me proceed.
Yes, please.
This is a, this is an important, the impervious area is addressing, this is a very important thing that, that you're addressing and I have no qualms about that. I do, would like to address the impervious area calculations and the fees that are assessed based on that. Right now, the requirement is easy to meet with large lots, but it's hard to meet with small lots, which the lot sizes in the lower part of the city on the, in the flatlands are usually substandard because the current standard lot size is five thousand square feet according to municipal code. And the, I don't know when the, that was implemented, but there's a lot of lots that are under that size. The, when you get below the five thousand square feet, the amount of impervious area ticks up pretty quickly. And the, for example, you can, there's a lot of buildings that are, a lot of homes that are on twenty five foot lots. And with the setback, the, the side of the buildings are slammed right up on top of the property lines. There is no five, ten, twenty foot setbacks, which could count as permeable or drainable soil normally. But, so it's very easy to, for these fees to be attached to the smaller buildings and smaller lot sizes. To be attached to the smaller buildings and smaller lot sizes. And it puts the onus on, onto the owners of the, of these substandard lot sizes. The, I would like to recommend that. For example, in the municipal code, the, the maximum floor area is adjusted by lot size. So the, could we uh think about adjusting the impervious area? Uh requirements could also be adjusted by the same. Lot size requirement and uh, and also I would. I would recommend a carrot and stick approach. You already have the stick, but. Maybe could you consider assistance to homeowners to replace uh hardscape driveways, walkways. And patios with permeable alternatives similar to the sidewalk repair program. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Next is Kevin.
Hello?
Hi, whenever you're ready.
Yes, I am agree with the president uh talk about the uh. The income we have ready, a hot income right now. We come ready fist, so we cannot effort to pay more. For the property tax uh for this one. And uh, can you find something the, the avenue like that? So we, because if we, if we agree like that, so every year we have to pay for. This amount and then we have to fight away, we have to pay for forever. And then it can, and then later on, the eighty year we have to increase. For the, for the, for the, the amount for the storm. So that mean I'm not agree. With the, with the, your, 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 uh, you say, with, I am, I'm not agree with that. Yeah, so I, I, I agree with the, the, to the president talk about the, the one. The one you, your council or your committee need to figure out the avenue or something to, to do it. Yeah, we, we, we don't have much money. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Next, next we have Ann.
Uh, good evening. And I really, I live in San Bruno for a long time. In different areas and I really see, you know, the presentation, you know, that is the. The storm drainage need to be replaced, but at the same time. I kind of feel like our property tax is already really high. When I look at the property tax, um, the, I, I printed out. It's besides the regular, they charge us the, the property tax. That's already added other items. We need to pay for that too. So when I break it down, I, I live here in this building, I mean, my, my house for, you know, almost twenty years. So I already have to pay like eight thousand something dollars or eight, eighty-five hundred, uh, hundred dollars. A year. So if I break it down, it's almost eight hundred dollars a year, a month. And my husband is already retired. The social security is only fifteen hundred a month. And I'm going to retire in another two years. So, I mean, thinking about you already chop off. Our social security and not even talking about, you know, the waters and, and the sewage price is very high in San Bruno. So I think, yes, we need to get done, but I don't think it's the homeowner. Need to bear all the, you know, to bear the cost. I know you gather from business too, but like many. Residents earlier, they mentioned that, you know, we know this problem for a long time and the city should. You know, foresee this and project and budget into these things and to fix it. And um, it's like a balance your budget and see where you can cut and where is the setup the priority. To do it and generate revenue from someplace else rather than get into the homeowner and which we, doesn't mean we have money. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for your comment. Um, we do have fourteen more speakers. The last speaker will be, uh, first name is Andy. So um, continue on, please, Madam Clerk.
Dennis Matthews.
Hello?
Hello, whenever you're ready.
Yes, uh. You have ninety million dollar settlement from PG&E. Why not just use that money instead? Seems like this project has been well-known and documented since the eighties. It seems like the project for fixing the storm drain should be a priority. Rather than to. Spend it on. The San Bruno Recreational and Aquatic Center. In San Bruno, you have many retired residents on limited incomes. We don't need more bills to pay. So I propose, I propose you postpone the San Bruno Recreation and. Aquatic project. Use that money, the fifty million dollars. For the storm drain repair. At no cost to the residents. It's a better use of the money. Your project is about thirty-one million. So there's plenty of money there. A financial advisor told me that. If this passes, the city will be liable for all residents for any and all. Or be liable to all residents for any and all flooding of their property in the future. They can sue the city for repairs. You should check your legal department on that. If this passes, this should not be a never-ending charge. The stormwater fee should stop once project is completed. On a time schedule and completion date, not an open-ended time schedule. If this passes, you should exempt retired residents and all. Your residents that are on limited income. You know, it, it occurs to me that I've heard. That you put public uh review at the end. So you would drop a lot of people and it appears to be that way. You had sixty-nine. I heard Linda mention that forty had already dropped off. I heard somebody say there was a hundred. So how many are actually listening right now? I think you need to change. Direction on how you handle public response and let them be first on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and thank you for uh staying with us tonight. Next speaker, please.
Next is Vito in Dominica.
Hi, good evening. Um, I, I, I appreciate all the information that was given out tonight. On the storm drain. I, as a, a member of this community for about a half a century, I could tell you. That we are a mixture of different backgrounds and ideologies. But one of the things that's important to keep in mind, that in this community, we have a number of people. That are senior citizens on fixed incomes with health issues. We have a number of people that uh are in the poverty. And people that are in between that had had jobs, lost jobs. Uh scrambling to try to make ends meet. Uh, some people are losing their homes. And, you know, it's a combination of things. Utility bills keep increasing. The city decided to add an extra fifty cent sales tax uh here in the city. Which has hurt the local businesses because a lot of people will go outside the city to do their purchases. My recommendation to the city council. When you build an infrastructure, you also in, put together a maintenance plan to maintain that infrastructure. Since somewhere along the line, they dropped the ball somewhere where they didn't keep up with it. My suggestion is that you look at first the state and then the federal government. We do have an army corps of engineers in the federal government that can step in and help. In some of these things where they need to be redone. Uh, they've done it in other communities throughout the country. I would exhaust resources in checking out those agencies. And see what they can do to help your city, our city, okay? It's hard for the people here in this city with this type of epidemic that we have. To, to be asked to, you know, dig into our pocket whether it's today. Or next year or the following year because we still have to recover. So in that, I close and I bid you good evening and thank you for uh putting this on. I wish you would do another one of these.
Thank you for your comments and, and they will be coming back again. Next speaker, please.
Next is Angel Cruzes.
Uh, hello, uh, good, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you for this opportunity, uh, for the public to discuss their, their concerns. Been, I've been a, a permanent resident at San Bruno for about twelve years. I plan to be here for more decades. This is the place I wanna be and I wanna, you know, see it improve in many ways. I completely understand, you know, the need for tax section. You know, taxes, you know, pay for our police department, for our paved roads, infrastructure. So I completely understand why there's actually is needed. It's, it's, it's just kinda hard to digest when, you know, fees and utilities and taxes are just keep getting pounded and increased. Every single year and you don't really see any improvements in your daily life, you know, you still see those potholes that are there for decades. You know, ecology, you see, one of the things that I, I just don't really understand is that why are we only constrained to just one? You know, one utility servicer and uh, it's kinda hard to really. Take this, this next increase. It does impact me directly quite a bit because my property is on a. It's above the five thousand square footage, so my assessment is, is a lot more than, you know, than, than the average. Even though I have a dry well, even though I went through a very rigorous process of uh city planning and approval to kinda have that done. And it seems like not only did I go through all the hassle and hurdles and expense just to get taxed again. Just like a lot of my, you know, fellow neighbors suggested, we need to improvise, you know, we need to. Look at a different innovative ways to uh generate, generate income, just like cannabis. Why it has been approved statewide, why are we not having any cannabis dispensaries? In, in the, in the city, I just don't really get it. I would. I, I definitely understand the need for these increases, but we have to look at different ways to get this revenue and not choose the easy way. Of just taxing its residents, you know, out of, out of this area. Um, that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next is Dan.
Hello, good evening.
Hello, whenever you're ready.
Okay, hi, thank you. Um, so uh, about three years ago FEMA came through here. And I'm down here in the Bel Air area and declared this whole area a flood zone. So by. This tax increase or this increase, will that uh improve this area to the point where? I won't have to pay that anymore. Uh, I'm paying uh close to six hundred dollars a year. Uh, then on top of the, uh, I think my property is five thousand square feet, that additional fee, so I'll be paying a lot more. So will this improvement prove to FEMA that uh? That I won't have to, this is not a flood zone anymore and would that alleviate that? And actually that would help out a lot for especially everybody down in this area. You know, uh, during the high tides and all that and I know. At that time, when FEMA came here, the SFO was building up their, their. What do you, their, their wall, their sea wall around SFO and racing that up, but I haven't seen anything, uh, San Bruno. Do anything about that. Uh, on our end, um, they had talked about South City also that, cause we're kinda connected to that, but. Basically, my question is, if this goes forward, will the FEMA flood insurance go away? So, alright, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Simon Lee.
Uh, hi, I'm Simon Lee. Um, I represent myself and my family in April Vista Avenue. I'm just gonna read you the letters I sent to you guys a few weeks ago and I'm hereby strongly protesting the proposed. Storm drainage and flood protection fee. I believe this is unbearable additional burden to our family. We are struggle to make the month's end as it is. Each month, our income very enough to pay for the essential skyrocketed. Gas fee, garbage fee, electrical fee, mortgage bills, insurance bills, healthcare payments. School programs and many, many others to keep us sheltered, fat, healthy and keep the kids busy and sane. I'm sure many of you are parents and homeowner. I understand how difficult it is to raise kids in this global pandemic. Like many struggling families across the countries, we are facing unprecedented. Financial, mental and many other challenges. I ask of you, no, I beg of you to please, please withdraw the, the proposal. The additional fee may not seem a lot for those who do not live in this planet, but for those of us who live in San Bruno. I would think it would have a surely destroyed families and homes in our great cities. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Richard Bernal.
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, thank you for having me. Uh, measure G was approved. It was a, a four million. To the general fund, projected two point nine to twenty twenty-one. Uh, where's that money allocated to? Uh, you can use some of that. We're all in shortfalls. Everybody, every resident in San Bruno has a shortfall. It's just not the city. General fund expenditures, you have fifty-six percent in public, public safety, which we need, but public works only gets eight percent, which I find odd. General fund capital, uh, reserve, you have almost four, almost five million, four point nine. Why isn't that money being used? Uh, you have reserves, your general fund cash reserve, six point three million for a total of nine point seven million. Why isn't that money being used? Then looking at your expenditure fund summary, uh, you have twenty-two million for water surplus. Waste water is twenty-six million, storm water is only a hundred and twenty, a hundred and sixteen thousand. Uh, looking at your capital improvement summary, you have carryovers of twenty-one million for water. Waste water is twenty-one million, project funding for, for both water and wastewater are twenty-two million. Your, your five-year program for water is sixty-six million and fifty-seven million for wastewater. But yet only storm water is, is, is a five-year program, is only two point eight and, and par, uh, project, project funding is only one point three. I find that odd that it's so underfunded for water storm, knowing that you've had this problem existing for decades. I think you can hold off on the street sign and light signing replacement programs at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think that money could be allocated to. The stormwater project. Uh, also, I'd like to know. from the Biden administration, how much the city will be receiving for infrastructure and capital grants, capital improvement grants. Have those been, um, have you reached out and applied for those since twenty fourteen? And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is MS.
Hi, good evening. Um, this is Matthew Sum, the property owner along on the Opmont Drive. Uh, thanks for opportunity allow us to express our opinion. First, uh service and maintaining the utility infrastructure are important. But we have to repair the system, but I wonder if the Department of Public Work have their team explore other solution to resolve the stormwater issues and what have they studied on the different solutions? The city is proposing nearly thirty-one millions dollars to enlarge the storm drain pipes or duct. I wonder how this will work when the sea water level rising as the, the storm drink run off to the, the bay. The water may still backing up, a certain level may have flood again. Some coast, some coastline city already talked about reinforcing or increasing seawall to block this uh rising sea level. But we are here talking about er norging the pipes, um, allowing the runoff flow to the bay. I'm curious how it's gonna work. We needs to have the permanent solution to resolve the stormwater, not one-time deal. Or the problem may come back to the future generation. The DBW has always asked the property owner or people who in the construction or designer to provide permeable surfaces, allow the runoff from the roof, uh, from the area to drain or replenish the aqua floor. But some probably have altered front yard area. The newly developed businesses, parking area, has been paved with solid concrete and asphalt concrete for parking. That's your contribution to the runoff. But we, I wonder that we, have we promote other permeable surfaces or the plaza parking lot? Rapid road, public road to, to reduce the runoff. The city may utilize the roadway surfaces area to absorb the initial heavy rain period, which will reduce a substantial amount of runoff from, uh, from the storm drain. There's an example in other city, uh, other state already using permeable material to reduce the runoff. So what happened to our city talk about something else? And one last thing, um, per the slide, number twenty-five presented by Jimmy Tank and described differences between impervious and permeable area of material. But the actual condition may varies runoff drain to the property. Permeable paper or ha- as a husk cake allow rain replenish to aqua floor, but I wonder how they calculate the formula to um to making for each individual owners. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is David De La Torre.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, good evening, uh Mayor Medina, council members. Uh, my name is David De La Torre. I'm a lifetime resident of uh San Bruno. Um, I, I'm not certain if this uh fee uh increased proposal is, is the answer. Uh, however, um, we are facing a dilapidating uh system in our storm drainage system um that needs to be upgraded and uh piecemealing it is not gonna resolve the problem. Um, uh, I, I grew up in the avenues and under lane uh um neighborhood and uh to pass the time away, my friends and I would uh make these uh makeshift uh newspaper sailboats and we'd race them from First Avenue and chase them down all the way to Seventh Avenue and then we'd repeat the process. Um, it's uh, um, I, I now live in a, on the nine hundred block of Hensley. Um, same um, same uh problem occurs here. Um, you know, San Bruno, we, we need to uh meet the demand with all this uh current development and future development that will happen. Um, uh I, 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 I heard uh James Regomez of the Building Trades uh jump on earlier. Um, talking about uh, 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 an agreement with the Building Trades. Um, if this project does go through, um, I support that, uh, as many of the um building and construction trades uh members do live in San Bruno. Um, and San Bruno being a blue collar uh um city, um, it, it's, it's appropriate. So I, um, again, I, I don't know if these uh fees are um the right way to go about it, but um we are, uh, we do need to upgrade our, our infrastructure and um I support the agreement with the Building Trades. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next is Jeffrey Tong. Jeffrey, I'm trying to get you unmuted.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Tong. Um, first of all, I think historically people don't vote, so the protest letter was unfair. I believe the protest letter should ask for people who support as well as people who protest and then take fifty percent plus one of those returned mails. Secondly, um, I believe San Bruno should look at the problem in solutions. We've known for since Jimmy Carter's time, about forty years that we are facing global warming and we should look at how we manage stormwater environmentally with permeable surfaces and water banking for drier months. Um, thirdly, I believe we should repurpose uh such as the recreation center funds for stormwater. And as uh Raina mentioned, we should look at alternative income sources of funds such as uh cannabis and, and just be more uh creative in uh looking for funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Paul N. Paul, I'm trying to get you unmuted.
Okay, there we go.
Whenever you're ready.
Yeah, yeah, so I am protesting the increase. I think the uh city manager, I believe he said it the best, uh about if this didn't pass, we'd have to eliminate programs. I agree with other speakers as far as uh canceling the parking wreck remodel and new pool. And uh I also agree with other speakers using the PG&E money uh for this storm drain fund because this is a, a true emergency for people um who don't live in the hills and live downstream. And uh how much money is in the general fund? I'm sure I can probably look that up online, but uh, yeah, how much money is in the general fund, including the PG&E money? Um, also, uh, you know, this, this whole program, uh, I've been here for thirty-seven years and I've seen a lot of uh rentals pop up. You know, the parents pass away, the kids either sell the place or uh most of them are renting and uh renters to me. Um, they bring in uh more automobiles, uh, they bring in uh uh, you know, increase, I feel increase in crime. And uh, you know, you put more, more, more burden on people with uh, with fees. Uh, it makes people mu- wanna move out of San Bruno. Um, in, in that Crestmore project, I've walked by that uh San Bruno Avenue, Lenardi's Market. Um, I've seen that hillside for years and it, you know, it's, city of San Bruno waits till the last minute, that, that, that hillside collapsed. And it could have been fixed years ago for, for half the amount uh San Bruno spent on it. Uh, you wait for things to break and uh and not fix them beforehand. Um, so uh that's it for me. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is David M. Hi David, whenever you're ready. David, I see you're unmuted, but we're not hearing anything from you. Mayor, I'm not sure what's um happening there. I think we should move on.
Okay, let's go to the next speaker and then we can circle back, please.
Andy Coffin.
I'm trying to unmute. There. Yeah, hi. Good evening, or maybe I should say good morning to everyone. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council members and those, anybody who still might be listening and awake. What I would like to know is who determined the sixty percent of lot size formula for the impervious area and the proposed fee? This, you know, doesn't seem right. Many residents live on a fifty by a hundred foot, square foot lot, five thousand square foot lot. And one of the speakers, I think it was Mr. Wells, noted that, that statistically it's five thousand square foot for an average sized lot. So that would be about a hundred and fifty dollars in the new proposed fee, three times what the forty-six dollars that we're now paying. Some lots are smaller, twenty-five hundred square feet, thirty-seven hundred square feet. But many people like me have larger lot sizes. My proposed fee is a whopping four hundred and seventy-three dollars. And most of the backyard that I have is trees and dirt and, you know, hillside. Some of my neighbors, they're paying more. One is estimated to be over six hundred dollars proposed fee. Another is four hundred and thirty-three dollars proposed fee. So this is not a fair formula. In the final analysis, I think those of us with larger lots would pay a fair fee. But nobody has measured and what I would like to know is is somebody ever gonna come out and measure and determine what the real size of our lot, the impervious area is? If it's over five, five thousand square foot, maybe that would be a determination and say those that are over five thousand square foot, we're gonna measure and determine a new formula. So I'd like somebody to figure out a new fair formula, not the sixty percent that's being proposed now. This would be fair to larger and smaller sized lots. And most of us understand and might agree to pay a fair fee. So let's figure out a new fair formula and measure the lot size of people who have larger sized lots. Um, and with that, I say good morning to all.
Good morning to you too. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next is Linda Freitas.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, uh, mayor and council members. Um, I'm completely an advocate for maintaining impeccable infrastructure. But I just don't understand what has happened to the capital project funds in this city or the lack thereof. We went two years without streetlights. I know it has nothing to do with the storm drains, but that's another infrastructure situation that they knew was a problem for years that was never handled. The PG&E funds, I agree with the people that have spoken on that previously. Instead of making a rec center that's on a champagne budget and we only have a beer budget because we're so underfunded in all our capital projects, why hasn't anybody decided to, let's put in a new pool, let's update the rec center and let's use that money on the storm drain situation? I've never heard any mention other than they were dead set on this massive rec center and pool, which would be wonderful and used by many, I'm sure. But we've got bigger and better problems to use that money for and I believe it's supposed to be used for something that assists all of the city, not just a single portion of the city. And I, I mean, that's wonderful that they have not raised the, they're gonna hold back on the rate increases. But I believe that this property tax rate change is also gonna be increased annually. Then we're gonna go back to the rate increases that we've skipped out on this year, pick up the ones for the future years. So we're really not giving these people that have lost their jobs and potentially losing their homes a break. I, I think this is the absolute inappropriate time because if the city can't manage their own budget and deal with these important situations. If I'm a homeowner and I can't handle my own household budget, what do I do? Call the county and tell them I'm not paying my property taxes because I had other important things come up? I, I just really feel for the people that are on fixed incomes. We've got several neighbors that are retired. We've lived here for forty years and these people just don't know where the money's gonna come from. It seems little to some, but to some people that are only getting seven, eight hundred dollars a month, this is massive amounts of money. And we also just redid our yards and we have our gutters and draining down into the lawns, onto the planters. Our water isn't even touching the gutter. So is somebody gonna come out and evaluate that situation? We spent a lot of money doing this and we are still gonna be penalized. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, let's see if we can't get uh David M. back.
Okay, David M., I'm bringing you back in.
Hello.
Hi David, whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, yes, so um I'd like to uh let you know that I've been a San Bruno resident for about twenty years now and I moved out of San Francisco because of these type of um taxes that um continue to increase. Um, I agree with uh most of the previous callers that um infrastructure is number one before you start building fancy uh centers. Um, I feel it's ironic that PG&E did the same thing and we sued them for that and unfortunately we had this fire and killed a bunch of people, but they were not paying attention to the infrastructure. They were spending their money on other things. Money was re-appropriated. We've known about this problem since more probably before two thousand and fourteen and we have not um decided to use the money on infrastructure. I, I agree that we should uh not be putting money into a, a special interest uh gym and a rec center that not everybody will use. Instead, we are looking at taxing people who are on fixed incomes or have other financial situations. I also think that it, it was unfair for uh the way the system was uh these letters are sent out and again, the way that someone mentioned before, it should have been if you're gonna vote, do a vote, not a how many protests come in uh basis. It should be on how many uh people agree and disagree. I understand that there's gonna be another vote, so that, that would make sense. I also, it's disappointing that we uh started this meeting, I started at seven o'clock, it's now twelve o'clock. There were people on the line. We all knew that these people were waiting for this specific item number seven. And unfortunately, our antiquated system was not able to allow us to stop and pivot and redirect, um, you know, when, how we uh handled this. And luckily, um, you know, somebody finally stood up and said, I think it was Tom Hamilton finally said, you know, and now it's been over an hour and a half that we should address this first before we continue on with the other matters, so thankfully, um, that was addressed. Um, also, this whole fair and ethical means of the assessment is absolutely not fair and ethical. Um, some other callers, you know, described some of the, the methods and problems with um how they're uh calculating this. It makes no sense. I have a fifteen hundred square foot house on eleven thousand seven hundred seventy-five square foot property. I'm getting assessed over three hundred and eighty something dollars, whatever it is. And uh it's all this, I believe we probably got and with the driveway and everything around the house, it's probably more like twenty-five hundred. They're, they're assessing sixty-five hundred. They should have went by the size of the house and multiplied that by what a standard house driveway and area are and multiplied that by what a standard house driveway and area around the house would be, not by the size of your property. It's ridiculous to do that based upon the size of the house. You would obviously know that, you know, that not everybody's going to have the money to expand and put, you know, concrete around their entire property. So that, that's not what I would call fair or ethical. And it's just frustrating that we aren't looking at other more positive solutions rather than just trying to, you know, tack this fee onto the homeowners. When homeowners aren't probably the big, the biggest cause of this problem, it's probably the big businesses with all the big parking lots and the roads, like everybody's mentioned. I think looking for more positive solutions is definitely the right answer versus trying to just say, okay, we're going to now decide that we're going to do something about this, even though we've known about it for years. And I think a few other people had good ideas on how, you know, how we could look for other funds. And that's pretty much it. That's what I have to say for this evening. But I I just want to say that I one hundred percent disagree with this and would like to see the city council, you know, take all of these suggestions into consideration.
Thank you for your comments. All right, and it just, the time's elapsed. But thank you for your comments. I, I see we have one final speaker who got the, his system went down. So, and I think you had probably about thirty seconds, so I'm going to say thirty seconds, and then this is going, going to be it for the last speaker. Because you had spoken before, but then got cut off.
Yes, this is James Gómez. And I want to apologize, my system froze on the last speaker, so the timer stopped working there for a second, but I was able to get it back up.
Okay.
Mr. Gómez, I'm going to bring you in the room.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak, finish my time. What I was saying is that the bond, our pension money gets recycled into the stock market, goes into safe investments like municipal bonds. So for this, for infrastructure, just like this, I've sent you guys an article that's going to come out in the Organized Labor Paper, and I hope, with, also with the meeting request, so I hope that I could meet with you guys soon and discuss project labor agreements in detail. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Okay, council, thank you. And I know, you know, I didn't, people had stayed with us for quite a while, and I want to give them that courtesy of this up to three minutes if they had wanted it. So I appreciate everyone's patience. If you want to, just for those that are left, this is going to be a continued public hearing, so this is not just done. As of tonight, it also is noted that people certainly can drop off their protest letters to where the, and staff can correct me, where the utility bills are dropped off as well on Linden, so that there's another option or opportunity as well during the public hearing process. First, I know the city manager, I mean, Vice Mayor, do I go to the city manager first, or is it something you want to? Is that okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to do a reality check. It's, it's past midnight. We still have other items on the agenda. This, this, this item will be continued. There are a lot of questions. If, I would guess it'd be an hour to go through all the questions. They're all important questions. Some are easy, some are, some are more difficult.
Okay.
Just, what are we going to do at this hour?
Okay, so my first thing, and I didn't want to jump all, all over, but the study session, I've been asking if that can be postponed. That's the first thing. Second thing is, I need you, us to check our calendars because we do have to meet on that within a reasonable amount of time, and that could mean next Tuesday, the thirtieth, because it's a grant, and so we need to make sure we're, we're within our timeframe. And then I'm going to ask the city manager in regards to the conduct of business item. If council, their comments, short, we could, we could take care of that. And then we have consent and we have the conduct and we have what's left of this. So city manager and city attorney. Let's hear from you about the time element.
Sure. Mayor, with regard to the rest of the items on the agenda, you're exactly right. We are pushing up against the grant deadline for the Huntington Cycle Track. As you know, we nearly have two million dollars worth of grant funds that we have. They do need to be expended by January twenty twenty-three, and we need to design the project. We are due to provide an update in early April, and so if we can continue that item to a special meeting, that would be great. With regard to the garbage rate increase, we should address that item tonight, given the time sensitivity of that. With regard to this item, there have been a number of comments. I can take probably less than seven minutes to go through a quick response, given that we have forty people still on, and a number of people that made comments have spoken. I can give a quick summary of, just to provide people with information. But yes, you're absolutely right. This item will be continued to April sixth. And so we will have more time for anyone that did not attend tonight, or anyone that would like to ask additional questions. And that is a special meeting that is not, that does not have all of our regular business items on it. And so there will be more time dedicated at that meeting.
And what about consent? Is that, is that necessary for the accounts payable and payroll?
The most important item on consent is the twenty twenty
Housing.
Housing element report that needs to be submitted to the state. And so consent is a quick item. I would recommend that we do that tonight as well.
So, council, here's, here's my thought. Let the city manager have his seven minutes, since there are folks that have asked questions and, and are on the line. From there, why don't we move up to consent? Hopefully, that might be quick, I would perceive, and then go into, as he said, the conduct of business, which I guess is necessary, postpone the rest. Is that, can we go with that? For today, in this new day? Yes, Councilmember Mason.
I just thought that maybe we might have some people here for the recology item also, so maybe we go to recology and then we go to the others. Just a thought.
That's fine with me. Yeah. Good, good, good thought. Councilmember Salazar.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, does the law permit us to continue this meeting to tomorrow if, if it's going long? Are we allowed to just continue the meeting?
Uh, muted.
Sorry, thank you. That's a good question. Look, give me a second and I'll get back to you on that, okay?
Okay, so I, I don't want to lose time. So, do you want, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe we just go to consent. I think that'll be pretty quick, get that out of the way.
I'd be more, I'd be more than happy to do that.
But you know what, you know, what, what Councilmember Mason said, if, if we're going to do recology tonight, let's do recology tonight, and we could do consent at the very end.
Yeah, because it would just, I, I don't think there's many people on the line for consent.
And, and I, and I, I, I think the, the answers to all the questions would take more than seven minutes, and, and we could do a better job giving better, more thorough answers and not be rushed. I would like to go back and listen to them again, but there were, there were a lot of, a lot of information.
Well, why, 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 why don't we keep progressing, and we're going to come back to that, because the Councilmember Salazar asked a question. All right, so let's move on to conduct of business. Item six A, adopt resolution in acting garbage rate increase proposed by Recology San Bruno for twenty-one, twenty-two. And scheduling property, property owner notice and protest process as required by Proposition Two eighteen. City manager.
Okay, so by understanding the direction from council, we are pausing on the stormwater item, and we are going to the recology item, and you would like staff to give that presentation right now versus do a quick answer to questions and continue the stormwater. Is that, is that what I'm to understand?
The, the reason it got paused is because the Councilmember Salazar asked of the city attorney, can we continue this matter that we're currently on because we're in a new day? He needed a moment, but we didn't want to keep losing time. City attorney.
Thank you. Yes, I, I believe if the city council wished to continue the entire meeting to a date and time certain, you could certainly do that. There are a variety of logistical and other issues associated with that. There already is a, a city council meeting, a special meeting, I believe tomorrow afternoon. And then, of course, there's, the city manager may have.
City attorney, I want to just mention, I'm sorry to interrupt you, the meeting tomorrow is for staff, not for city council.
I'm sorry, thank you. I apologize. I saw it on my calendar and didn't, didn't look at it carefully. Okay, well, then, in any event, the city council could continue it to a date certain, whether it's tomorrow
Let me ask the question. I think Councilmember Salazar's question is legally, technically, we are now in a new day. We're in a different day than when we started this public hearing. Can that continue? Yes or no?
Yes, it doesn't matter whether you're in a new day or not. You can continue the meeting to, to a date certain.
Okay, so here, I'm going to go back to my colleagues. We have still quite a few folks that are on the line that ask questions. If the city manager can keep it to several minutes, I, I, I feel that if I waited this long and it's in the new day, I'd like to get my answers or something, than have, have waited all this time. That's just my opinion. Okay, I'm seeing some nods. I, I, I see three thumbs. Okay, let's just, city ma, okay, city manager, keep it to what you said.
Let's go quick. So in summary, I think I almost heard unanimous agreement that the, the, the condition of the stormwater enterprise certainly needs improvement. But what we also heard is, why don't you apply for, for grants, federal and state funds? The good news is staff has done that. The council knows, at the very last meeting, we presented a, a regional stormwater project that has over two million dollars of grant funds, and there's another spyglass project. That's over three point two million dollars of grant funds. Unfortunately, neither the federal government nor the state government will fund our thirty million dollars worth of improvements to our stormwater system here in Bruno, because our system is underfunded. We really need to take care of that locally, and we can choose what options, but that's truly a local responsibility. Some individual projects may get grant funding, but, but not for the larger amount. A question was mentioned about coastal flooding or shoreline flooding, and will doing this decrease the insurance that people are paying because they're in the FEMA flood plain? Unfortunately, that answer is no. The improvements to take those properties out of the FEMA flood plain are actually not improvements that the city of San Bruno can do because they're outside of our jurisdiction. We are landlocked. Those are improvements that have to be done by Millbrae, South San Francisco, and the, and the airport. There was a comment about use PG&E money. Why are we using the fifty million dollars in PG&E money? A quick note on that, that community engagement process started in twenty fifteen, over six years ago. The bids for the aquatic and rec center were literally due at five o'clock today. One of the things that I don't think everyone in the community knows is that when we looked into replacing that building, the analysis on the seismic needs of that building that was built in the fifties meant that it was actually cheaper to replace that building than to retrofit it for seismic needs. And so we likely would be replacing the rack no matter what, given the seismic issues, and, and I really do think we would be. Can we pull from the sewer and, and, and water enterprises? Absolutely not. Individual enterprises, when we collect money from water fees or sewer fees, they have to go to that enterprise. It is actually illegal for us to, to use that money for this. Appeal process. There is an appeal process, people. So a number of people mentioned, I have a large lot. I don't think the formula is fair. There's an appeal process. If you are awarded in your favor, the fee will be reduced or we will reimburse any fees that have been paid. For example, if a property drains fully into their own property, or does not drain into the stormwater system, maybe they have a French drain, they're, through the appeals process, they can ask to be reassessed and have a assessment done on their property, and they may be exempted from the fee, or have a significantly reduced fee amount. And so that is built into the model. In addition, we had people mention, I have a large lot. I don't think the model works for me. Know that the Woldan study is on our website. It was an industry standard model. It is, it has been analyzed and reanalyzed, but absolutely, there are large parcels that we will be looking at. We think there are approximately about two hundred and fifty parcels that we want to take a second look at, given that we do have some unique large parcel size here. If it is found that your fee was over calculated in the letter that you will receive, you will receive a revised letter from the city. And there are some large parcels that we are taking a second look at, and it is our intention to issue those revised letters, and certainly if we identify something, and this fee passes, the correct amount will go on the county tax roll on, on, on what we submit on July thirty-one. Lastly, there were some ideas on ways that we should conduct this process. Know that we are following state law. It specifies exactly how this two-step process has to be conducted. And I think in, in high level, that captures almost all of the comments that were mentioned. Thank you for the community that attended and stayed on. I see Councilmember Medina raising this hand. Maybe there's a question I left off.
Vice Mayor.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. The question about the suing the city, that if the city does approve this, then we open ourselves to liability. That was one of the questions. Another was, why couldn't there be a sunset or date of, of, a completion date on this tax? Another was using the Army Corps of Engineers to assist. Those are the three other ones that I had.
Okay, as far as the sunset, the community should know that we are not through this analysis raising thirty millions tomorrow, or, or thirty million in, in five years. We are actually raising just enough money where we can take out a bond and pay that back over a thirty-year horizon, and also have money so we can put money away for other capital improvement projects. So we're not, not doing projects and, and having failures and the cost of those going up. And so there is not a sunset, and, and there is a provision where this will increase, or could increase annually based on city council discretion by, by CPI. And that is meant, so we are no longer in this position where costs are increases, costs are increasing, and we are not covering the needs of the system, and so things are not getting done. And, and so we're solving this problem. With regard to potentially being liable, I, I'll let the city attorney address that. There was also a question of are there exemptions for disabled or senior members of our community? Unfortunately, this is a property-based assessment. Everybody pays it, including nonprofit entities, schools, anyone that owns a property pays, pays this fee because it is a, a citywide system. Mark, do you want to address the legal liability question?
Yes, so I, I, of course, that anybody can sue anyone for anything. Adopting a, a fee to fix a, a system that may be undersized now and, you know, isn't effectively conveying stormwater away is, is not something that is likely to result in liability to the city. In fact, not, not fixing it is likely to result in liability to the city. And there have been claims that have been presented to the city for, you know, for flooding and so on. And that's one of the things that we're trying to avoid. I, I, I do want to say one thing. We're, really just want to caution everybody right now. We're all rushing to try to figure out what are, what are we going to do next? And I'm afraid that we're going to get something wrong. So I want to make sure that we're clear about what it is that we're doing. There is another public hearing, a continued public hearing on this item on April, already scheduled for April sixth. So if the city council is going to sort of close out this item for this evening right now, then the appropriate motion for somebody to make would be to continue the public hearing until April sixth. If instead, there is a decision that tonight's meeting is going to be further continued to a date that's before April sixth, then we need a, a different motion, and there needs to be a discussion about what that date is going to be. And notice of that meeting does need to be posted at least twenty-four hours in advance. If you decide to schedule the meeting for later today, you know, at, at seven o'clock, let's say, this, this evening, then that notice has to be posted in all of the, the locations immediately after the meeting. So I don't know that, that staff is going to be able to do that if you want to hold, hold the meeting, you know, this, this afternoon or, or this evening. Meaning, you know, after everybody goes to sleep and wakes up again. So I, I think we, we just need to take a quick pause and figure out what is it that we're doing to make sure that we don't get any of the legal procedures wrong.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. So I think what we were talking about was having this continued to April the sixth. So, um, I think what we were talking about was having this continued to April the sixth, uh, not, for example, seven o'clock, uh, tonight or seven o'clock the next day. So if that's the case, then council, but we do need to have a motion and a second to continue it to April sixth, if that's the wish, and then we would need a roll call vote. Vice mayor Medina.
If, if I could please have a little more clarity from our city manager, could the council now put a sunset date on this provision?
No, you're muted.
I'm sorry.
No, not you, no, no, city manager.
Oh, God. Thanks. Now I'm muted.
Can, can the city council put a sunset date in what, uh, in the, in the ballot question? I believe the answer to that is yes. Um, uh, and I see the city, uh, attorney, uh, confirming that. Uh, my recommendation to you would be to, given the hour and given that we are continuing this meeting, uh, if we were to engage in that, we do have our consultant on, I just say that we, uh, engage in that at a later, uh, time, uh, on, on April sixth, um, and, and, and sort of pause that, understand that, the, the, the concept has been raised, uh, but, um-
Okay, that's good, thank you.
All right, so, uh, council action? Is there a motion to, uh, continue the item?
I'll, I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing until April sixth.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, Salazar, Mason, roll call vote, please.
Council member Hamilton?
Aye.
Council member Mason?
Aye.
Council member Salazar?
Aye.
Vice mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you so much.